Welcome, I'd like to call over to the regular scheduled meeting of the Kingston City Council. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand, I'd like to ask Mr. Pearson, Ed Levison, and Blair, and I'd also like to ask senior Jesse Griffith of the golf team to leave some place, so please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come here to do the city's business, and we pray your guidance upon the city officials as they make decisions for the best interest of the people. We pray for those who have come here tonight, to hear, to listen, to participate, and we ask for your blessing as they go on their ways, and lead them safely home. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. C.
I'm Brown.
Madam Clerk, if you please call over.
Councilmember Brackett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Childs?
Here.
Councilmember Humphries?
Here.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Present.
Councilmember Wright?
Present.
Mayor Neil?
Present.
To hear a motion to approve the previous minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second?
Second.
Just thinking of Ms. Stockton, do we have any corrections in relation to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call over the minutes, please.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Childs?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Seven hours.
I've got a couple of proclamations to do, so the first one I'd like to do, I'd like to ask the Kingston Golf Team if they've come up, please.
So, this is the Kingston Golf Team that just finished in the state tournament a few weeks ago, so we've got a proclamation for them. So whereas the city of Kingston is the county seat of Rome County, Tennessee, and whereas the city of Kingston wishes to honor the Kingston Golf Team, and whereas the Kingston Golf Team in meritorium of representing the city of Kingston hereby set aside November 12th, 2019, and honor this team in recognition for their accomplishments as follows: They competed in the 8-2 A-State Championship in Manchester, Tennessee, finished in second place, and won the district and region tournaments, finished in season with 41 wins and three losses. The members of the team include seniors Dawson Lane, Jesse Griffith, Min Mullis, and Logan Carter, junior Malcolm Sherbine, sophomores Kobe Johnson and Caleb DeHada, and freshman Blake Woody and Brady Reynolds, head coach Mike Neal, and assistant Landon Hardy. Whereas the city of Kingston wishes to thank the golf team for their contribution to the city in setting an example of excellence for the citizens of Kingston, and therefore our Timothy Eftney Honorable Mayor of the city of Kingston, to hereby proclaim the 12th day of November of November 2019, Kingston Golf Team Day, and urge all citizens to acknowledge their contributions to our city. There you go. Thank you, guys.
I have one more today. The Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition, you guys can...
So this is the Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition. So whereas the mission of the Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition is to reduce youth substance abuse, to educate and raise awareness of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug issues, promote community involvement, and strengthen community partnerships and prevention strategies in Rome County. Whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign is the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention week, and offers citizens and students of Rome County the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug prevention and drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign. So therefore, I, Timothy Eftney, set my hand and call the seal of this fix of this proclamation. The week was October the 23rd through 31st, but I believe you guys had something to do at the middle school that night, didn't you? So I want to make sure you got these taken.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
No problem.
And councilmembers, thank you so much. We are continuously in our efforts within Rome County on our drug prevention, and we have P-3 clubs in all the middle schools, high schools, and elementary schools, and so I have some representatives today from our P-3 club, which stands for Positive Peer Pressure, so I'm just gonna let them say their name and what grade they're in real fast.
I'm Matthew Cantrell, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Cherokee Middle School.
My name is Shelby Griffith, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Cherokee Middle School.
My name's Heather Basie, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Cherokee Middle School.
And we're so honored to have Ms. Caraway, she is our P-3 club sponsor, she does a lot throughout Cherokee Middle School with our Anti-Drug Coalition, so very appreciative of her, and thank you for honoring us tonight.
Appreciate it.
Avery, Avery's passing up some stuff.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Now, I'd also, we've got time set aside for any persons wishing to appear before the council. If anyone wishes to appear before the council tonight, I guess, please come up and state your name and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Travis Staff, I live at 1290 Calaway Drive, Monroe, Tennessee. I am, me and my wife own the crane food truck, with been under our understanding that they passed the ordinance here in Kingston that is going to require a $120 permit for us to operate in the city of Kingston. Well, that's, you know, I think a little steep, a permit to require for this size of city. Number one, I think that for the size of events that happen here, that is especially too much money. Because, I mean, we go all over East Tennessee doing this, and there's only three cities that I know of that require permit, that being Knoxville, Maryville, and Clinton. Knoxville, our permit is initial cost of $200, and then ever year after that is $50. So, in three years' time, we're paying more in the city of Kingston than we are in the city of Knoxville, and there's a ton more stuff going on in the city of Knoxville than there is in the city of Kingston. So, here's what I think's gonna happen if y'all go along with this and keep it. Number one, I mean, it's gonna make it so hard, you know, for us to come down here and do these things in the city of Kingston, we're just gonna look at it and say, you know, it's not worth going down there when we can go elsewhere and do things. So, you know, I'd like for you guys to really reconsider this, and, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know what the suggestion would be, but I think, though, in the long run, here's another thing, it's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt like we go to the Kingston Elementary and do lunches for the teachers. If we're having to come down here and get, you know, these permits, it's gonna stop that. And, I mean, they enjoy us coming out there because they don't get to have an outside meal, you know, on a daily basis. So, I mean, we don't go out there daily, but, I mean, we're down there, you know, a few times a year, and I just think that it's gonna hurt that. All the schools, churches, I mean, if we come in here and do these little events, I mean, it's just, I mean, they're not, what I say, over-the-top profitable, they're just, we come and do it, because, number one, I'm originally from Kingston, and I like to come back where I was raised, and, you know, see the people I know, and that's, you know, that's my main reason for coming up here and addressing you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to address the council tonight?
My name's Matt Milton, I live at 334 Euclid Avenue, I'm also business owner in town at Ourtown, 5 East Race Street, and just want to talk about the Christmas Parade route, seeing if we can go back to what the original route used to be. I've been trying to work with some other businesses in town and get some things going for also in association with the parade, like that night, and I've talked to several businesses other than myself, and they're all willing to do something as well. It's a little soon for this year, but next year we'd like to plan a lot more, but we can't do that if the route doesn't go through downtown Kingston. I've done a lot, Outdoor Kingston has done a lot down there to beautify that, the board, the beautification board has done a lot, and so we'd just like to be able to, you know, be back on that route so we can, you know, have some business opportunities and things like that, and be able to incorporate a lot more of our downtown as we revitalize and do other things. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll go right into reports, mayor and council, Mr. Humphries, do you have anything to report?
Um, I do, we had a very successful street fest, we had a lot of compliments on our music, and on our vendors, most, all the vendors said that they did very well. We had our sturgeon release, we had, in conjunction with Abbot Kingston, our puppetry, which was very successful. We've got our Christmas candlelight tour coming up at the fort, and Chase, what's the date on that?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. And we have a Christmas parade coming up on the second.
Mr. Charles, do you have anything to report? Vice Mayor Stockton?
I have a few things, a little bit behind on our mirror on Rome County News, but if you haven't been by, it's already got a great start on it, it'll be amazing when it is completed. Weather permitting, it should be completed very soon. The beautification's working on a couple of things, on a route that'll be a welcoming sign when you come in to town, I think it is gonna be fantastic in addition to the city, and then also working with the state on a welcome sign for all the permits that's required in here, so we want to be able to have something to bring to the council to, from the beautification, so I think it'll be great.
Thank you. Mr. Brackett, do you have anything? Mr. Wright, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Wright?
No.
I have anything either, so I'll turn it over to the CM Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I have just a couple of things here, in addition to my written reports, we received a couple requests now to host events at the amphitheater, I know Chase has had a call, I had a request as well, we're having to decline those, I just wanted to let you know in case anybody contacts you that for liability reasons until the facility, until the contractors finished all the work and they've taken it off their liability and handed it over to us officially, we just have no choice but to deny those requests. Once that happens, even though we won't have an official grand opening until next year, we'll be able to rent it out or let folks use it, but hopefully that won't be too much longer, I know everybody's excited about it, and certainly want to see people use it, we just have to wait till we're covered on that. Give you an update, I get a lot of questions about the Greenway and the repairs up there, just to give you an update, we met with Call Your Engineering one more time to finalize the plans for the repairs, we're clear to proceed, we've got a good plan in place, everybody's on the same page about that, the only problem with the, now that we're midway through November with the possibility of bad weather, we've made the decision to delay that work until spring, we hate it's taken so long to get to this point, but the good news is with, even though dealing with FEMA has made it a long process, we do think that we're gonna qualify for 100% reimbursement for the mitigation project, so we're definitely, good news there, and I'll update you as it gets a little closer, but just want to let you know that we think it probably best that we put that off until spring to start that job. As you probably know, we recently completed fall brush pickup, this is the second pickup since you all enacted the new schedule, happy to report that that's gone very well, we had no complaints, and from everything I've heard, it was, it went really smoothly. Leaf pickup has been scheduled for the first two weeks in December, unlike the brush, we're just doing that as the calls come in, we're not gonna follow a route on that. We'll be sending something out in the water bills and advertising about it, but want to let you all know in case you get any questions, that that will be coming up. And just finally, want to give you a quick update on the Gallagher Road codes enforcement issue that we've been dealing with, based on a little bit of work being done and a conversation with the property owner, we did make the decision to grant them a 30-day extension on that, that new deadline is November 23rd, we made our expectations very clear to the property owner, we certainly hope they'll comply, as of now, not very, not overly optimistic, but still have a little bit of time, if they don't, then that's a conversation that we'll have to have at that point, but they are on the clock on that, and they know what's expected of them, and that's all I have, is any questions?
Anyone have any questions for the CM Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to item number 70, it's addition of items to the meeting agenda received after the close of the agenda deadline, if there was not any. Item 8 is unfinished business, and we have none, we'll go right straight into new business. Item A is consideration to approve the citizen request for insulation of speedboats on Old Race Street, we talked about this Tuesday night, we have a motion to approve this insulation.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Brackett, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Humphries, Mr. Brackett, do you have anything to discuss on it? Is Humphries, do you have anything?
No, I just think the citizens that live there want it, and we should do it.
Counsel? Mr. Wright? Just for the record, Mr. Manager, it meets all the qualifications set forth by the policy of the city of Kingston regarding speedboats. Madam Clerk, if you'd call over that, please.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Childs?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Item B is consideration to appoint Tori May to a four-year term on the board of zoning appeals, is there a motion for this appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wright, second by Ms. Stockton, anything you have, Ms. Wright?
No, sir.
Ms. Stockton?
Yeah.
Counsel? I prefer call over that and appoint to the board of zoning appeals.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Childs?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Item C is consideration to appoint Susan Whitlock to a four-year term on the beautification committee, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Whitlock?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Stockton, second by Ms. Humphries, Ms. Stockton, do you have anything?
No, I think she'll be a great asset to the beautification committee.
Ms. Humphries?
Yeah.
Counsel, do you have anything? Also, the mayor wanted that up through the agenda of next December, just wanted to look at that ordinance on that. Madam Clerk, call over that, please.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Childs?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Item D is consideration to change the route of the Christmas parade, is there a motion to change this route?
I'll make the motion. I have my question.
Motion by Ms. Humphries, second by Mr. Brackett, Ms. Humphries, do you have anything to add?
I just feel like it would be beneficial to our businesses downtown, we're doing a lot to try to revitalize that area, and as Matt Milton said, it would help them out, and I just think a lot of people would like to see it go back to the way it used to be for years, and I know the chief, I've spoken to him, he doesn't have an issue with it, I know that Chase as parking rent director is for it, so I'd just like to make a motion that we do it.
Mr. Brackett, do you have anything?
No, except that that's the way it was when I was a kid, and I see the background, so it's just, people get a lot of, especially the small kids, they get a lot of thrill out of it, not all punched, I'd just like to go back to the route.
Mr. Charles, do you have anything?
No.
Ms. Stockton?
Oh, I think it's a definite positive, I mean, it's one of those things, if you can help local businesses, and then also it actually shows more in the city instead of just the newer part of town, so, I mean, if I had a choice, we could go through the entire business district, but I don't know how long the parade, but I think it's a great thing.
Mr. Wright, do you have anything?
It's my understanding that TDOT doesn't have an issue with this, our fire chief doesn't, our police chief doesn't, and I believe we have cooperation from the county if they need to stage emergency vehicles on the other side, the only real issue remaining is a traffic detour, and that's just something that we're gonna have to put notice out, if you're wanting to come down 70 and take a ride on 58, you might be waiting a while, so either wait two hours or find a different route. So, in saying that, I think we have all the approvals that we need to do this.
Mr. Wright, do you have anything?
You know, I told you the other night that I wasn't for this, I think it's a safety concern, I think we're blocking the people that need to go down Highway 58, and that need to go down Highway 70. I would really like to ask, but I'm not going to, upon order, I don't even think we've got the authority to do this. If you look at your charter, and I draw your attention to section 5.03, 5.04, under the city manager's responsibility, all of this is his. Second problem I have with this is that there's been a motion and a second with no discussion about the route. We're just gonna change the route, so who's setting the route? The old route. I think for procedure-wise, that it needs to be in whatever motion it is, if this is a policy change, I think we can vote on it, but I have not seen a policy change that changes this. This is the day-to-day operation of City Manager, and I know that he's uneasy about doing it without some kind of nodding of heads. My question would be, when it comes time to set the 4th of July parade, I guess we're gonna come back and vote on it, and then when we have a run-through town, we'll come back and we'll set the route for that. When storming the fort comes up, I'm assuming we'll come back and set the route for that because we have now set a precedent if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. CM Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, just that, we, of course, as Councilmember Wright said, we did, I did talk to TDOT, and they said they don't weigh in on this, that they do leave it up to local authority, the only thing they ask to be included in is if we tried to detour traffic, which we just, for practicality purposes with manpower, we just can't do. We will, Chief Washington and I talked about it this morning, we will meet with the county if this is approved about an ambulance, trying to make arrangements, maybe we can get one staging in a certain part of town, or just at least make them aware, we'll do everything we can, of course, you know, there may be no issues whatsoever, but we're ready to do, we went over the staffing, Chief Washington and I did today, we will staff whichever route you choose, so we're good at the staff level, whatever you all want to do.
Chief Washington, do you have anything to add?
No, sir, just like City Manager said, we've got everything staffed, and we've also got some of the floating tanks or cars, and then like we've always done with the old route, we get a call, I want it down to somebody's closer, then we can send that person. So, we've got it.
I think for clarification from Mr. Wright is that the parade was started, the fire hall turned right in front of the little rocky top, Highway 70, the 3rd Street, 3rd Street to, what's that, Cumberland? Cumberland, Kentucky, and all the way down to Brom Street. Is that correct? Make sure that's reflected in the record, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are we gonna have a staging area over around the fort or anything, like we did in the past? In the past, we had like, maybe one crow car and a fire truck goes out around the fort area in case something was on that end.
Yeah, we always had that staff around James Ferry, and we also have a staff up to 58 and 70 in case someone needs to get around, like in James Ferry, so they come all the way up to Euclid, Church Street, 3rd Street, West Route, or East Route.
But there is a staging area, similar to what we used to have.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, call over, please.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm going to abstain because I think it's against the charter.
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Six hours.
Item E is a continued discussion of admitting the existing food, mobile food vendor policy. Mr. Bolinell, there was an issue that could be possibly coming up this Saturday, is that still an issue, or?
There is an event, I guess, Chase, is it this Saturday? Okay, so there is an event, we did confirm that their plan was to sell food, so because of that, yes, it would be applicable under our current policy, and I think, you know, we have clearly determined that we don't, I don't have the authority, we don't have the authority to not enforce that ordinance, so as it stands now, if the ordinance isn't changed between now and then, it would be in effect.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to rescind food truck ordinance 19791.
Motion to, again, of the ordinance, repeat the number, please.
19791.
Did you say rescind or amend?
Rescind.
Is there a second?
I have a question.
I don't have a second question. I'll tell you. Motion by Ms. Wright, second by Mr. Childs, Ms. Wright, would you?
Yes, sir. As Ms. Brown pointed out in our workshop, this is an ordinance, not a policy, so since we can't account for every situation that may come up in this, I think it would be better off to make this into a policy. Obviously, everyone has their opinions on what we pass unanimously, needs to be tweaked, so in hopes, I'm wanting to rescind this ordinance in order to reinstate it as a policy with whatever changes anybody would like to make, and in rescinding this, it'll be able for them to have their event on Saturday with no issues, and if there are any other issues, once this policy is re-voted on, it won't be such an issue to make changes to it.
Mr. Charles?
We're gonna kind of bring it up like last January meeting, for a February vote.
I would like to probably discuss it, December workshop, June, whatever it takes to get it right.
All right, next, work session.
Oh, by the way, we also need to have a second reading this week, so in order to get this done, we've got to come back tomorrow, Thursday, or Friday to finish this thing.
Rescind?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
We have to have a second reading.
Well, repeal. Still, why? Still, question. And that can't be done by Saturday?
Yeah, we'll have a second reading this week, special call meeting.
You have to have it, you have seven days.
This week, I've already asked the opinion on that, and from my understanding, as long as it wasn't the same night, we are okay.
You can have successive special call meetings, if you've got that sunshine.
That's, that's adequate public notice, is what I've called. Mr. Childs? Anything? Ms. Humphries, do you have anything?
I do, I was going to make a different motion to amend, but if we're making a motion to rescind the entire thing, I guess my question would be, is this just gonna continue to be an ongoing issue or something, we could just amend the policy that we have and resolve now and be done with it?
I think we've got a lot more questions on the policy, and I know I do myself, and a lot of, I'm learning a few more things and asking a few more questions to some of the vendors that I need...
vendors that I need to answer.
It's my understanding right now, the biggest problem is the fee, the permit fee. If we kept the health and safety part of it and just removed the section on the fee, would that not fix the problem or are we still going to have to address other issues? I guess is my question.
Yes, as far as I know, yes, it could. We could.
I mean, what's the will of the other council members? Is there more continued discussion necessary in everyone else's opinion or would that fix the problem?
I think you were wound up with seven different opinions on how much it should be.
Well, I was going to make the motion to just do away with the fee altogether because I don't really see that we're going to get any great benefit out of that and I think it's going to cause us a lot of issues with vendors, food truck vendors not being willing to pay. And I don't want to see that happen and I don't think it's going to benefit us at all really to charge that fee because I don't think we'll get anything out of it. They just won't pay it. And I know that the hot dog guy decided to come on in and pay it, but that's a little bit different situation. He's paying basically $10 a month for 12 months a year, but he's got a little cart that he can set up every day. Most of the food truck vendors don't work that way. They come to events or they come to weekend things. They're not somebody that can just set up in a parking lot every day.
Anything else? Ms. Stockton?
I was just, I was trying to remember whether or not it had to be seven days and I couldn't remember, so that was my only question I had by doing that process, so.
Mr. Brackett?
How much money will the city lose if we do away with the fee?
None because we had it before.
Well, I mean, are we talking about a large amount of money or liquid donations?
Kind of hard to, I mean, like for Street Fest, we had what, three, three or four and 4th of July. So I mean, you know, you're topping a few thousand dollars a year, a couple thousand dollars a year maybe, you know, at $120. The only one we've issued so far is to the hot dog vendor and if this is amended or rescinded, then, you know, we'll refund his money to him. But, you know, if every food vendor conceivably, I wouldn't think you're looking at more than a couple thousand dollars a year at $120 a pop, but it just depends on how many sign up, how many sign up for really.
How much do we charge for a spot? A certain spot at the fest or?
It could vary. I think Street Fest was $50. $50 for a spot, so, you know, conceivably if they pulled out, then we'd lose that revenue. But neither one of them are big moneymakers by any means. I think, you know, the most important thing in my opinion about the policy is the safety regulations and the background check. I think that's certainly much more critical than what little revenue we'll get off of it. So in some form or fashion, we do need a policy in place. It's just a question about the permitting fee.
Mr. Ratt?
Mr. Attorney, does this need to, just making a motion to rescind, does that meet the criteria for an ordinance?
Well, you can repeal an ordinance in its entirety in a way she counts that by designating the ordinance itself. Rescind is probably the wrong word. Repeal is.
And is that the, you sure that's the right number? That just doesn't look like a.
Yes, it is.
I think that's sad, that's not. Anything else?
Oh, I wouldn't say it if I did.
Mr. Attorney, I have a question for you. And this is a law question. Instead of rescinding the ordinance?
Repeal.
Repeal. Can we put this ordinance on hold or stand by?
No. No. You've got to, you've either got to amend it, repeal it, or leave it like it is. Those are your choices.
And even in amending the ordinance, it takes two reads, right?
It would. That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
See, but anything else? Any other questions?
Well, I would like to ask also, I've heard through the group on that there may be another event somewhere in Kingston this week that a food truck was planning to come to and I guess if we vote to repeal this, even though we won't have had our hearings, will we still be enforcing it this week?
If the event is, I don't know what event you're looking to, but if it happens before the second reading, then yeah. This will be in effect, this policy will be in effect until a second, assuming the first reading passes until the second reading passes.
Is everyone available tomorrow night? Anybody not available tomorrow night?
Mr. Mayor, I think tomorrow night would be a little tight for your adequate public notice. Yes, you can do it, but you still got the sunshine law and I would need to give as much public notice as you possibly can in 24 hours is probably, you don't have, you're not going to have a newspaper available. You can have some media presence. You can put it on your website and you can post it in various separate places, but, and there's very little likelihood, but I would think that even if you're looking for those times, either Thursday or Friday would be a better time than Wednesday.
No further questions on that. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on repealing food truck policy?
Ordinance.
Ordinance, this is policy.
Councilmember Brackett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Neil?
Aye.
Six ahs, one aye.
That being the end of the agenda, the city council meeting adjourned. Then we'll go straight into the Kingston Beer Board meeting. Madam Clerk, do you please call the roll on the previous minutes?
Member Brackett?
Here.
Member Brown?
Present.
Member Charles?
Present.
Member Humphries?
Present.
Vice Chair Stockton?
Present.
Member Wright?
Present.
Chairman Neil?
Aye.
No business coming for the beer board, this meeting adjourned. Now I ought to call the Kingston Water Board meeting to order.
Member Brackett?
Here.
Member Brown?
Present.
Member Charles?
Present.
Member Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stockton?
Yes.
Member Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Neil?
Aye.
No business coming for the beer board, this meeting adjourned. Now I ought to call the Kingston Water Board meeting to order.
Member Brackett? Member Brown?
Present.
Member Charles?
Present.
Member Humphries?
Present.
Vice Chair Stockton?
Present.
Member Wright?
Present.
Chairman Neil?
Present.
Do you hear a motion to the previous minutes is read?
Make a motion.
Second. Make a motion, Ms. Stockton, second by Mr. Charles. Do you see any corrections or relations to the minutes? Madam Clerk, call the roll for the previous minutes.
Member Brackett?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Charles?
Yes.
Member Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stockton?
Yes.
Member Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Neil?
Aye.
Do we have any citizens wishing to address the Water Board tonight? Seeing none, I'll go to the Utility Director's report. Mr. Bellinell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things in addition to my written report. The raw water pump, if you remember that you purchased for the water plant, has been installed. It's now online. There's some pictures floating around that I took somewhere of that, but it was very impressive and quite an ordeal to get that out of the ground and get the new one in. But it is in, no problems and we were able to get by just fine while it was being built. So thankfully, no issues there. As we work on our capital planning over the next couple of years, we'll probably be looking at trying to replace the other one and then we should be gone, should be good much longer than any of us will be here. But happy to report that is in and operational. Just going to give you a heads up, we'll be talking more about this and probably putting out some notices, but we are planning on doing some smoke testing over the next couple of months over the winter, so heads up on that in case you get any calls. People wonder why smoke's coming out of their gutters and things like that and we'll be doing that. And finally, just wanted to brag a little bit. If you read through my report, you'll notice our water line loss this month is at 12%, down to 12%. As far back as I've searched and I certainly can't go back all the way, but I don't know that we've ever been below 10%. So that's very close and that's certainly way, way lower than the state average. So that's a pretty big deal and proud of our water guys for all they do to stay on top of leaks, but that's money that's not going in the ground. So just wanted to brag on that a little bit and that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the Utility Director? Seeing none, new business is item one, consideration to approve a contract with each wants or utility district for the sale and purchase of water and authorize it for the mayor to execute the signed contract upon approval. Do you hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Wright, second by Ms. Stockton. Ms. Ratt, do you have anything?
I do not.
Ms. Stockton? Call the members. I'd like to get this done before existing contract runs out the 1st of December. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Member Brackett?
Yes.
Member Brown?
Yes.
Member Charles?
Yes.
Member Humphries?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stockton?
Yes.
Member Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Neil?
Aye.
Anything else coming for the Water Board tonight? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.